Good evening. We want to welcome each and every one of you to the Board meeting for the Board of Trustees of Port Arthur Independent and School District, School Board on December 14, 2017. We are ready to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin, first of all, by having an invocation by Trustee Deborah Ambrose.
Dear Lord Father, thank you. We thank you as we submit ourselves to your own grace. We thank you for this season. We thank you for your love inside Jesus. God, we pray that you give us wisdom and guidance in making the decisions that's for the better of our district, our children, our teachers, our city. Thank you for all that you've done, and we ask that you continue to bless us in your presence in Jesus' name. Goodbye, Saint.
Let's begin with the pledges to United States flag and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
This time, maybe I'll roll call these.
President Frank.
President.
Our president here.
Senator Kyle.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
We have four. Trustee Kelly Popper is going to be here, but he's going to be late. He's coming from work. Want to share with us our mission statement. Our mission as the primary source of the public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population, providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of Port Arthur Independent School District. We're going to have some presentations. First of all, we'll have the resolution to consider designation as a District of Innovation.
I want to thank you to Doctors Getwood and Ryan for their work on the District of Innovation and getting it working with Region Five and getting it together with the dates and how we're going to proceed. The first thing we will ask is that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution to consider designation as a District, at Port Arthur, as a District of Innovation. We thank our Commissioner of Education for proposing this and getting it off to a good start. I was talking to Danny Lovett earlier, and they're saying that there are 650 districts that are just have the designation, so we are anxious to become one of those districts very, very quickly. Mr. Terry, you said five on the internet today, just trying to get ready to become one. So, the resolution states, whereas Education Code 128.001 provides that a district is eligible for designation as a District of Innovation if the district's most recent performance rating under Section 39.054 reflects at least acceptable performance, and that the consideration of designation as a District of Innovation may be initiated by a resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees of the district. And whereas the Port Arthur Independent School District's most recent performance rating under Education Code 39.054 reflects at least acceptable performance, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Port Arthur Independent School District, by adoption of this resolution, initiates the process under Education Code Chapter 12A to become a District of Innovation. Being further resolved that after this resolution is signed by the Board, a public hearing shall be held within 30 days to consider whether the district should develop a local innovation plan for the designation of the district as a District of Innovation, and that within 30 days of the public hearing, the Board of Trustees of the Port Arthur Independent School District shall instruct the Superintendent of Schools to create an Innovation Plan Committee to develop a local innovation plan or decline to pursue designation as a District of Innovation, adopted this 14th day of December 2017 by the Port Arthur Independent School District Board of Trustees.
All right. We'll now open up our public hearing so that we can discuss the process of becoming a District of Innovation. We're so glad to welcome on today friends of ours, Dr. Danny Lovett and Dr. Byron Terrier of Region Five on today. Gentlemen, why don't you come forward on today and share with us. Are we going to approve the resolution? All right. Do you have a motion to approve the resolution for the Port Arthur Independent School District to become a District of Innovation? Do you have a motion?
I have a second.
You have a motion and a second. All those papers are out. All right. Let the record reflect that. Mr. Lawson is coming, and Trustee Popper is coming.
Appreciate y'all being here.
Appreciate y'all being here, and as he said, I'm Danny Lovett with Region Five. This is Byron Terrier, and we are going to do your public hearing. We're going to go through a brief slideshow to describe some things, requirements, and typical aspects of District of Innovation. We're not here to advocate for or against. We're here to simply give you information that you need in a public hearing to help give feedback and support at the appropriate time. So, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Sir. We're going to move from the day of thought about use of that last panel.
How's it going?
No, 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 no. Don't get up. Don't get up. No, I'm positive. Don't get up.
They're going to have to stick with that camera anyway.
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't try to get up.
I think the camera or something. They've got, they've got.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. All right, so without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Terrier. We will take questions at the end, but you can also ask questions during the presentation. We'll be very informal, and our goal today is just to give you the information you need. Byron?
Good afternoon. Again, we do appreciate you allowing us to come share with you today. And right off the bat, the first question that many people ask is who can become a District of Innovation and who cannot become a District of Innovation? And as you can see there, a district with an active accountability rating that met standard is eligible. One that has not met standard, but has a final or preliminary related rating of improvement required is not eligible. So you must have a met standard rating.
One of the things we know you're proud of, and we are as well, is the great job you did by steer and being standard on every campus. Wonderful achievement. Congratulations.
The next question is, what is the process to become a District of Innovation? And the process is initiated with a board resolution that you just saw. It is, or it can be by a signed petition from a majority of the district level advisory committee. So either one of those can initiate the process. And tonight, you initiated the process with the resolution. The Board must conduct a public hearing to consider the development of an innovation plan, which is what we're doing right now. Absolutely. And then, as mentioned before in the resolution, within 30 days of the public hearing, the Board must formally decide to either pursue or decline the opportunity to become a District of Innovation.
All of these things were read in the resolution by Dr. Porter Reed, so you are perfectly in line with the requirements to do this. And as the public hearing, again, just to give you an outline of the requirements of a public hearing is you may ask any questions you wish, and we will answer them until you have no more.
We've got a question. Yes, ma'am.
And it may be question number three, but how will this directly benefit the students of Port Arthur Independent School District, becoming a District of Innovation?
That is how your committee, that's the actual intent and the duty of the committee, is to look at the specifics of your district and to design a plan that is custom-made to Port Arthur ISD. One of the, and again, we're not here, we're not going to come down on either side. We're just here to give you information. But the uniqueness of a District of Innovation is that you can design your plan to be whatever you want it to be. Should Port Natchez or Nederland or Beaumont ISD design their plan, it could be completely different. So it is a form of local control. It's initiated at the local level, and you can design that plan to be anything you wish it to be within the parameters of the law, which we will go over.
Is there state allocation?
Say that again.
Is there state allocation in terms of funding?
No, you do not get extra funding by doing this. Your funding can be impacted, and we're going to discuss that as we go through as well. Okay.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, so continuing. All right, so when the district elects to proceed, if the district decides to proceed, here's what takes place, and we can do that. The Board appoints an Innovation Plan Committee to write a plan that, here's what the plan includes, provides for a comprehensive educational program for the district, and the program may include the following: an innovative curriculum, instructional methods, and provisions regarding community participation, campus governance, and parental involvement, modifications to the school day and/or the school year calendar, provisions regarding the district budget and sustainable program funding.
And we will be glad to give you a little history on this. If you've ever heard these things before, what you heard is basically what charter schools were created. Now, you're back when they started charter schools over 15 years ago now. And the reason this has come into being in the last few years, we had a presentation by Region Five, I think, two years ago. Public schools were saying charter schools are a form of public school districts in Texas. Why are ISDs not allowed the same options to come up with innovative solutions? If it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, and that caught on, and that's where, that's kind of the history behind how ISDs became, it became possible for them to become districts of innovation. So what you're talking about in this process is basically a form, you don't write a charter per se, but just the innovative plan you write is much like what charter schools used to do when they were created.
And this really is a new opportunity that has been provided to school districts. It is something very new, and already, as was mentioned before by Dr. Porter Reed, 650 schools plus have already jumped on this opportunity to plan according to their needs in that particular community.
Trustee Region.
Who's eligible to sit on the innovation plan?
It's really pretty wide open, the Board. We didn't bring a lot of particular documentation, but in that plan, in the law 39 point, what Byron outlined, you can have teachers, you can have community members. It's a lot like a site-based committee, okay? So you can have business people. They don't have to necessarily have kids in the district. So very much like a site-based team, you can have faculty, you can have administration, you can have parents, you can have community members who aren't necessarily parents and kids in your school. So it's pretty wide open. You have a lot of flexibility in who you appoint to that committee.
This one's a little bit small, sorry about that, but part A, accountability and assessment measures that exceed the requirements of state and federal law and any other innovations prescribed by Board of Trustees, and identifies requirements imposed by this code that inhibit the goals of the plan and from which the district should be exempted upon adoption of the plan. This is really a focus on the Texas Education Code, and so you can't circumvent other laws, but this is to address the Texas Education Code.
You do have many exemptions in there, and we'll detail those on a couple of slides. The one thing that may have caught your eye is the, up there, much like, much like the handbook of next curricular organization can be more stringent than the general code of conduct, you can't exempt yourself from state accountability, but you can actually hold yourself to a higher standard if you wish. So you can't be less, but you can be more.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So by becoming, Trustee Ambrose was asking, does this specifically affect children of condition? Do children who graduate from districts of innovation, is it possible for them to proceed with consideration as they enter to university, enter at a higher level, or is that entering in a factor as well?
I would say that's a possibility, because universities look uniquely at every children, every student applies. So if they were coming from, in a way, it would be like making an early, early college high school or, you know, an exceptional high school for liberal arts, because if you adopt standards that are higher, and those are clearly evident, that is going to hold weight, I believe, within a university that's suitably applied.
So we can mold curriculum that we can be adding perhaps to a specific group, a specific area?
Schools have done that. I believe when Earhart Charter was first created in Beaumont, they were originally called the School of Athletics and Fine Arts. So just like you can have a college of fine arts or a college of technology, you can do that. What you can't do is exempt yourself from the TEES. You can put an area of focus, you can do different things, but you're still that one on the previous slide. You can have an innovative curriculum, but you cannot exempt yourself from the requirements of the TEES. So you can't reduce the minimum requirements, but you can certainly innovate and go beyond or go off once you've satisfied the minimum TEES. You could go off in a targeted direction, like a campus of engineering, campus of science and all these. Exactly.
Okay, so next, next steps after plan development. So once you have actually developed your plan, you will post the plan on the district website for a minimum of 30 days. Then the Board must notify the Commissioner of Education that you intend to adopt. It does not require Commissioner approval. He just has to see the plan, and so you have to submit the plan. The district committee holds a public meeting to consider and approve the final version with a majority vote. Then the Board must adopt the plan with a two-thirds majority vote.
So a simple majority vote of the committee, a major majority vote of the Board, a seven member board that requires five votes to pass. Okay? Any questions on that? Excellent.
And then the final standing step, once again, the plan, once it is adopted, the plan must be sent to the Commissioner, and the district must notify that the plan that was sent previously has been adopted.
And this was something we wanted to point out. Did you notice that nowhere in here does it require Commissioner approval? Right. But it does, maybe it does require that the Commissioner is notified. So it is truly a high form of local control. If your committee develops a plan and holds a public hearing, and if the community is on board, and then after that public hearing, if the committee votes to adopt the plan, and then the Board believes in the plan to the extent that they will give it a major majority vote, this is a true example, in our opinion, of local control. You do have to notify the Commissioner, but you do not require his approval.
Another question. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we do not require his approval, but we have to notify him. So let's just say for the sake of saying something's in there he doesn't like or he disagree with. What happens?
Nothing if he disagrees. Now, however, the reason you have to notify him is if he sees something in there that violates the law. This, this is not, it would just, and it would be simply pointed out, obviously, Miss Chabell, your team would look at that. You can't violate the law as long as everything within there meets the letter of the law, it meets the standards of DOI.
Then it's good.
It's just a, it's just a perfunctory, or what is the word I'm looking for here? A courtesy review by the Commissioner. But certainly that is, in my opinion, that is an extra set of eyes to look at it and just make sure that everything there is good. If he has a question, he would send it to T E A Legal. If they then still had a question, they'd shoot it back to the district, and your attorneys would look at it as well. So I, I think it's a good thing. It's one more set of eyes to check the legality and everything, but it, again, does not require approval, but it must meet all aspects of the law.
Thank you.
Okay, so here's the, the slides where the rough piece, the rough. Any exemptions included, these are ones you cannot do. District governance, curriculum, state assessment system, state accountability system, school finance requirements, federal, federal requirements, and any, any other requirements in state law outside of the Education Code. Again, the T E C is what this is focused on, the Texas Education Code, but you cannot circumvent requirements of governance, you cannot circumvent accountability requirements, curriculum, you can't be less than the minimum required of the TEES. So those are the things that are.
Your students are going to take the starches. You are going to get a district correct, A through F, just like everyone else. School finance, we'll mention this real quickly. This is because of your question earlier, that you don't generate any more funding through this. Now, having said that, if we've got some curriculum people in the room, if you were to go down a road where you really stress career tech education, and you were offering courses with career tech weighting, it could increase the funding that way. The people in curriculum and finance understand where I'm going there. But just because you're a District of Innovation doesn't, doesn't allow you or entitle you to any more funds than if you were not. However, you must be aware of the other side of that coin. It can impact your funding negatively, basically in one way. You have flexibility here to exempt yourself from the required minutes, 75,000, 75,600 minimum minutes. You can have less instructional time than what is required, but that will impact your funding. You are paid on a direct percentage basis to your ADA and the meeting of those 75,600 minutes. So for example, if you reduce your instructional time by 3%, that would be a direct 3% reduction in your funding. So we want to make sure that my was worth that.
One, one other thing that I want to bring to your attention, this year, and folks that are actually school district employees have heard about the Texas Equity Toolkit, and it was submitted on November the 1st, and it's about closing equity gaps. It's talking about teachers that are, a high number of teachers that are not certified, things of that nature. And that is a federal requirement that we close those gaps, and so you cannot exempt yourself from that. And that was, one of our districts did ask that question, and the answer is no, you cannot exempt yourself from the Texas Equity Toolkit.
That's a great example of federal responsibility. This is, District of Innovation is something that's offered to you by the state of Texas. It exempts you from no federal law. It cannot impact your free and reduced lunch numbers, that's a federal program. It can reduce or, or change any title programs, but it, it can affect many things within the Texas Education Code, because this is a state mandated or state offered option for you.
Okay, here are your allowable exemptions. These are the things that the committee can consider. Educator certification, teacher contracts, first and last day of school, the length of the school day, class size requirements, and certain purchasing and contract requirements. So those are the things that you can consider as a committee.
We don't mind addressing each one of these briefly. Regarding educator certification, if you have an area that you cannot find certified people in, you can write into your plan that it allows you to look at non-certified people in certain areas. You can write that plan as specifically as you want it. Teacher contracts, you can write that plan specific to teacher contracts. You can write the plan, first and last day of school, by far the most common thing we see, and although our, our job here tonight is not to advocate for or against this, I will say this. Everybody in the state takes the test on the same day. What's not common in the state is when everybody starts school. And people will say, a lot of justification and reasons why they start school when they do. I would say this, with everybody in the state taking the test on the same day, what are we dealing with this year in Harvey Impact Districts? Up to a month less instruction for our kids, because they're out of school during, during the hurricane, than kids who weren't impacted by the hurricane. So the one thing here that the majority of districts we've talked to, the biggest reason for wanting to do District of Innovation is that flexibility to start school early. And you can argue lots of advantages and disadvantages, but one thing you cannot argue, if you start your school year 10 days earlier, when everybody in the state takes that test, you've got two weeks more instruction under your kid's belt than someone who started on the traditional start time. Because that's the most common thing we heard, we wanted to make sure we addressed that issue tonight. Yes, sir.
I would get you all the way through by I think.
That's okay.
Educational, educator certification, we recorded some policies a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that the state has now disallowed was, at one point, we did district certification.
District level certification.
District level certification.
And what he's talking about is you could issue a district teaching permit, which certified someone to teach, or doctor as a certified teacher, but it didn't do them any good in any other district in the state. You go.
So now the goals have been completely disallowed, doesn't that in some way conflict with what we're talking about as boys' educator certification?
I think it's two separate things. I think if that was something in my district I had a great need for, and I lost that ability, I think I would consider that a District of Innovation, because it gives me that ability back. Does that make sense, the way I said it? It's two totally separate things. They're not related to each other, I don't think in any way. But if I were in a district, so I was in a very remote rural district, and, and, and by the way, district level teaching permits could only be used for certain subjects. But if that was something that I had not had a certified teacher for in many years or even an applicant, and I lost that ability, it would probably make me look at DOI to gain that ability back. Yes, sir.
Is this a, a, a pre-able to, to school choice? This, 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 this.
I'll ask Byron, then. I'll ask Byron to answer that also, just in case, because we haven't talked about this. I don't see it as related, actually, personally. It's, it's more like giving you the flexibility that charter schools, charter schools are public schools, just like ISDs. And this was more of a matter of people saying, you know, charter schools are public schools, ISDs are public schools. Charter schools have a lot more flexibility than the traditional ISD one. And so I think that's where the DOI was born. I think that was the cry of people across the state that started this whole process. Legislators and others heard that cry, and this is where we came with that. I understand what you're talking about, the school choice. Personally, I don't think this is directly related. Byron?
I, I say it the same way you do. Now, whether we're 100% correct with that, I don't know, but I say it the same way. I think there was just so much feedback that we're, we're not playing on a level field, but we're being compared to each other, that this was an opportunity for us to kind of get on that same level playing as a public school.
And Byron and I are both super tendents. And from my standpoint, the reason I would be interested in this would be to give my students the ability to perform better. All of these things to me, I would adopt any or all of them, only if I felt like it allowed my students to perform better. And I'm not just talking about state tests, getting into college, like I think you mentioned earlier. So to me, I think it's more a decent level playing field. I think that's exactly right. And I'm sitting here at an ISD looking at a charter school and thinking, you've got more tools in your toolbox than me, why? And here's the difference between charter schools and ISDs versus private schools and other schools of choice like parochial. We all take the same test, right? You take the same test as any charter school right here in this area, why don't you get the same tools to work with, get your kids ready for the test that that charter school has? And that's completely unrelated to a private or parochial school such as Bishop Kelly, which doesn't take the starches. So that's why I don't see a direct relation in my opinion.
Could this also, if that was a progressive or class sign, because traditionally, so the choice of charter schools gave to a smaller group of kids, which can uniform better than, than more of one, do we have this opportunity to address those around this issue as well?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's a short answer, but that's easy. And yes, you can go spot.
You can go both ways.
All right. So once you have developed your plan, here's some things that the district and the committee should look at, things to take into consideration. Number one, are policy updates needed to correspond with new exemptions? Because if you come up with this new plan, and they contradict your Because if you come up with this new plan and they contradict your policy, we've got an issue. So we need to go back and check all of our policies and make sure that they're aligned with the plan, that the plan is aligned with the policy. Articulate the problem your plan is addressing. So when we come up with this plan, we have to have the end in mind. What are we trying to accomplish with this plan? And it has to be articulated very clearly, so everybody understands, why are we implementing this plan? The third bullet, is there a program you are attempting to implement? So is that a program that we're, you talked about earlier? Yeah, are we talking about engineering, or nursing, or what have you? Is that the plan that we're trying to accomplish, or is it something else? But it needs to be articulated.
And what would you show there? You would show a high need in your area, right? Why would you want a nursing plan and another school wouldn't in their DOI? They may have all the nurses they need in that area, there may be a glut of nurses, you know, and overabundance. But in your area, nurses may be very hard to find, which means for your kids, that's a great opportunity. So you wouldn't just write a nursing program in your plan, you can show the research and the data proving that there is a need for more nurses in this area, and it is a benefit to your kids.
And the next bullet, is there an area of need in more of our ISD that can be addressed by the flexibility that's provided by this district of innovation plan? And you'll just spell that out.
And I'd go straight, that goes back to my example of the start date. By giving us the flexibility to start two weeks earlier, I would write into the plan, why? The most common thing is one of two things. What I talked about earlier, giving more instruction time to our students before the state test day. The other thing we hear a lot about, and I think it makes sense, is the ability to end the first semester before the Christmas break. We've traditionally, ever since Texas has moved the start date back, we've traditionally had schools over time crying out that, you know, to get our two semesters balanced close in the number of days, we're ending the semester after the Christmas break. Well, what does every high school and middle school do at the end of the semester? They give it the semester test. And we can all imagine how much better kids would do under semester test if they weren't coming back from two weeks off. So those are the two most common reasons we see offered for asking for the flexibility of an earlier start date.
I don't know, I don't know whether you'd say it's national, or state, or other countries, those schools, those who tend to do that. Can district innovation go beyond that?
No, you can go above. There's actually a very few districts in Texas that have your answer. There are charters that have extended school years of ten months or more. So yes, you have the flexibility to go beyond. You can even, as I said earlier, you can go less, but remember, the minute you come under that seventy-five thousand six hundred required minutes, you're going to lose funding. I thank you for the question.
Is there a great one, I'll show it to you from us, and show it to the teachers around here. Is there a great one designed to approve, uh, to use it to, uh?
You could absolutely make as part of your plan engaging and developing future teachers of America, that what we used to all call FFA, it has a new acronym, I forget what it's called, but Texas does have that. There's been a cry for more of that lately. We had a presentation, Dr. Porterey said every region five, where they compared the number of FFA chapters in the state versus the number of what we used to call future teachers of America.
Yeah, that's still one of them.
And still, in other words, you know, and it was like ten to one more of FFA. And so yes, you could absolutely write into your district of innovation plan an intent and an opportunity to develop future teacher leadership plans within your district.
And you make a great point. That's not just in our area that there's a shortage, it's statewide and nationwide. So I think everyone is facing that same issue. So it would be good to be ready.
Now before we leave this, though, we will say again, you cannot do less on curriculum. You must teach the TEES to entirety. You can do more, but you can't do less on TEES.
And that last exemption thing there is just involved on all state. Just keep people informed. Communication is key, as you know.
Which is why we're here tonight. You're required to have two public hearings in this process, where the first one, your own innovation team will do the second. But this process is transparent. It requires several board meetings, requires a committee with a lot of community input. So it's a very transparent process.
And then the last slide here that we have is encouragement in utilizing resources. If you have additional questions, once you leave here and you're not able to easily access someone, these are very easy references that you can utilize in the Texas Education Agency. If you just look up Texas Education Agency District of Innovation, they have a great website, frequently asked questions that you can read through. And it also lists, we talked about six hundred and fifty schools that were, have already done this plus, they list every school that's already done. It's on their website. So you can go and look at what other schools have already done. And you can go to those schools' websites, because they have posted their planning. And you can read through what some of the other districts have chosen to do with their innovation plan. And also, Texas Association of School Boards is always a great resource for things of this nature. And again, just, a lot of people are doing it, it's very new, and to have that many districts that have already done it, it goes back to local control, and people are really taking advantage of that opportunity.
Byron makes a great point. If I was appointed to this committee, firstly, the first thing I'd do is I'd go out there and look at that list of other schools. I'd identify some schools that look like my school, and I would go look at their plan to kind of get some ideas. All right, well, we appreciate you being here tonight. We absolutely will answer any other questions you have. If there's an area we didn't touch on, we'll try to do that. So Dr. Porterey, President Frank, any other questions anyone has? Well, thank you for having us. Always a pleasure to be here.
Again, we want to thank Dr. Levitt and Dr. Terry for this excellent presentation on today. We look forward to the coming of district of innovation and making the appropriate designations and recommendations in the best interest of our children and our stakeholders. Wanted Dr. Porterey to explain how that district of innovation committee is going to be formally.
Thank you, President Frank. We are asking for the board to consider and approve the appointment of local innovation committee and notification to the Texas Education Agency. The committee will be made up of local innovative members of the strategic planning committee, which we've worked with throughout, by your plan, and the district planning committee, who we already have members within the district.
Trustees, we have, we need a motion to accept the appointment of the local innovation committee. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Dr. Reed, motion seconded by trustee Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much, so. We'll go into closed meeting now. Under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.074, 551.08282, the board will meet in a closed meeting to consult with the attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, including settlement offers and other legal matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Department of Rules and Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. We also go into consider personnel recommendations, Texas Government Code 551.074, as follows. Consider employment of teachers, consider termination of contracted professional employees. We also consider settlement agreement, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in the matter of Juan Hernandez Lopez versus PAISD. Lastly, we'll consider superintendent's evaluation and related issues. We'll now go into closed session. We're adjourned. I think if there's anyone who has signed up from that, so we're going to have a staff report. I am going to take opportunity, I might, I'm going to, all right. During the time of Harvey, there have been so many people who have reached out to us and to help us through this very difficult time and season in our lives. And some of the individuals who have done so has been an organization from Dayton, Ohio, who had decided that they were going to have a concert, and then began to allow all of the proceeds from that concert to be used to help with the rebuilding and the refurbishing of Lucian Adams. So Dr. Porterey, myself, then some individuals from Lucian Adams, the principal and the teacher from there, had the opportunity to go up and to share in that concert. We were able to talk to very many people there who had decided to do so. One of those persons was Pastor Noah, who's here with us, he and his beautiful wife have come down since Tuesday, and they're going to be here, they're going to be guests, New Oak Church on Sunday, where our pastor, and I want you on today to welcome Pastor Jim and his wonderful wife, who would heal with us all today. And we're going to ask him to come up now and to share with us. Come on Pastor Jim.
Where's your last name, sir? I don't need to know. Yeah, Pastor, you know, you can know that too. I just, you know, I just want to thank everybody for hospitality. You know, if you guys have any gifts to give us, you know, anything I would ask is that you would give us a one-month membership to planning business or something like that. It's all we've done, Dr. Eric. Our body has fed us till we're full. I'm going to go home and I'm going to have to have an extra bag at the airport, I'm sure, because it's going to be this one right here. You know, we're so gracious and grateful to be here. I just wanted to thank everybody, you know, from Linda and myself, you know, this is all about love. You know, this is something that we created as a five-member team up in Akron, that, you know, basically came to fruition when we decided what to do, how we could stop all this, how we could help. It's like, we decided to do Texas, and when it happened, what we did is we zeroed in on Beaumont and Port Arthur area. That was the original plan. Plans change, okay? Billy Soul, the other gentleman, him and I were the ones that were able to get the concert together and that stuff, like, and things like that. We have pledged twenty thousand dollars for Lucian Adams, and we are going to stick to that plan. And we're all, we're all going to, long-term, what we want to do. Now, the thing that I came down here for was, in fact, and I want to just go back, I'm in touch with Billy Soul, what he does. Long time this guy, he in Akron, he's actually the communications deputy mayor to Mayor Oregon and Akron. Billy reached out to a group of mayors in the area, that's how we identified Beaumont and Port Arthur. And then in the long run, what happened was Beaumont said, no, he can take care of himself, but Port Arthur, not that they couldn't take care of themselves, Billy got hammered. We have found that out. There's so many things that I could go into stories and I'm not going to take up all your time and that stuff. We are just glad that we were able to come down here, because just the love, it's just awesome. People have been so gracious, Dr. Porterey and, and of course, our buddy here, you know, those of you that saw the newspaper article, that was him and I in that picture. I had to put my Houston Astro jacket on, because it wasn't really, it's real about what I made him put on in Cleveland, India, so. If you didn't see the picture, it was there, it was there, okay? And, you know, we've been, we've had a lot of things happen since then. And one of the good things I just want to kind of share tonight with you is, because of that article, and what we've done at with Port Arthur, it's got a certain tension from an individual who happens to play for the Cleveland Cavaliers. He's a hometown boy, was LeBron James. And he has LeBron James Foundation. Now, we don't like to bug people in our hometown. If they want to come to us, that's fine. We did not reach out to them, the Cleveland Cavaliers did, okay? One of the things that we're trying to do is to help with, you know, they were interested in the gymnasium, and what was, you know, it's a beautiful school. I had a pleasure of going up. The only one I played together was Washington, I'm going there tomorrow. But long story short, Cavs want to get involved in this. And I will share with you, and it's probably about the extent of it for right now, but we have many things going on. We are in for a long haul. But one of the things we're going to do, I believe, is this first Saturday in February, at the Quicken Loans Arena, which is the home of the Cavaliers in Cleveland. They're playing the Houston Rockets Saturday. Okay? On TNT, we're trying to get in touch with TNT, but what we're talking to the Cavaliers about right now is having some kind of a night, if you can donate, to the cause, or our, or our. I want to go a step further, we'll see how far it goes with my plans, okay? Because I'm a mixed sports enthusiast, been a long time coach, forty, forty-three years, just to try and put LeBron and Dwyane Wade, Cavaliers, on one side, and put James Harden and Chris Paul. These guys are always in the vents up there in Akron for LeBron, that's his hometown. So we can get some kind of video together, I would love to be able to share with you guys, happens, happens. If not, they are aware, they want to know. So that's the beauty of it all. So whatever happens beyond that is glory to God, as far as I'm concerned and stuff. You know, I've met so many wonderful people this past few days and stuff. I said to Linda, I said, I don't know where we're going. I really don't want to. Especially when there's nine inches of snow on the ground from today. As the group that came up back last month, the better the comms, we actually had snow. It floored on them, and it floored most of the day until they drove from the airport in Akron to their hotel. And then they got a cloud of snow. So they saw what it was like. I'll just take that as a hat on, nine inches, you got, we got, we're going off to house. So, you know, again, I just, I am so grateful to be here, and, you know, we're not, we didn't come down here just to sightsee, we came down here to work and stuff. Most of you know, I'm not a person that likes to sit around, I like to be active. We had, Linda and I had a chance to have lunch with Bear Freeman today, for two hours. There's a lot of questions, a lot of visions, and he was very gracious, Bear was very gracious with him. So again, I appreciate that, I know that was set up for you guys as well, so thank you, thank you. Because I have on my list of demands, because I'm like that, right? It's okay, it's all good, I think that's the culture. But I'm just so grateful to be here. We are going to, we've already talked about tomorrow, we're going to be in Washington to see the Adams Christmas program, okay? And then we're going to help with the, this is the blessing box, it's at one-thirty, okay? And I already said to Linda, I was looking at the paper today, I said, hey, Memorial's playing a game tomorrow at seven-thirty up here, so, yes, we're probably going to be right here. But that's what it's all about, it's about love, unity, and I just am so grateful to everybody here, and I can't thank you enough. I need one request, okay? I still need to know and get more information in terms of your kids. I want to have their stories. We had a one story today in volume, okay? And it was about a young man in the fifth grade, had an idea for one of his classmates that did not have stuff for basketball. He had no tennis shoes, he had no apparel, he lost everything. Emmett, his five-year-old, living in Canada. And we pulled him together, we did a video, and we had it on here. And we pulled him together, we did a video and we had it on air. I told them my goal was to put that video right in their lap, the Cleveland Cavaliers, and let them see what's all about. Because these kids all worked together, raised enough money to go out and people were donating clothing and tennis shoes and everything. This young man was able to play in basketball. That's what it's all about. It's about praising God for things that he does in our lives. For every story that I've heard bad, fortunately, there's been a good ending to it. I know it's not the greatest situation everything's in, everything has to be rebuilt. But in the same sense, you know, we're glad that the deaths have were buried in, you know, along with, it's a little worse. Just the descriptions of the song, so thank you. I didn't want to steal all your time and that stuff, but I want to get my part across. If you don't make these speed, I'm going to leave you. All the pastors, they don't quit off. All right? So that's great.
Again, thank you Pastor Jim. And please tell Billy Soul and all the others, man, how much we do appreciate all of them knowing. We look forward to collaborative efforts that are going to be put forward and we can just as well, you know, you're wonderful, why, to Port Arthur, Texas. Everything's bigger and better in Texas. So I'm going to have my jersey on at the game Friday.
There you go.
We're going to have, we're going to move forward with the agenda on tonight. First of all, we want to look at the minutes, considering if appropriate, minutes, the November 16, 2017 Board meeting. We have a motion, a motion by trustee Brown, second by trustee Martin, all those in favor say aye. We have our consent agenda on tonight. The following items, which are of a routine and/or recurring nature, have been designated consent agenda items by the board president per policy review local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee. In which event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not required separate discussions have been acted upon. We have items one through twenty. We're going to pull with the exclusion of nine.
No, it's scratched out.
Yep, it's nine's been excluded. We're going to pull item seventeen separately, we're acting on it separately. So we're pulling out seventeen. Are there any other items that need to be pulled out by, by, by the board members? Any other items? It's including nine, pulled out seventeen. Any others need to be pulled out for consideration? Any others? All right. With none being pulled out, we're going to ask for a motion for the acceptance of items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, I'm sorry, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. We have a motion by trustee Reed, second by trustee Brown, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Guys, have it. We will go to item number seventeen.
Thank you. I want to thank the board members, actually, Saturday, two weeks ago, we met and we went over each one of the policies that we are recommending for change. And it was a very well-organized, funded, and it suggested that we have more of those, which we will. We've gone over each one and we discussed each one individually. Now tonight, what we need to do is to agree for each one. I will read the policy that you are asking for revision, then I'll ask for a yes or no individually. So in our read, there's an excerpt of which, of what it is you do have with you, the changes. The changes are in blue and the, what's scratched out is in red. So we do have the recommendations and we will go pretty fast and I'll ask yes or no and you tell me yes or no. BQ local, the recommendation, the enclosed revisions are recommended to establish a new time for regular board meetings and a new deadline for submitting items for inclusion on the regular board meeting agenda. It said 7:00 PM originally and we're changing to 5:30 in our policy. Is that a yes or no?
Yes.
Who is that on the call?
Yeah, like you called at 5:00, but then we have open meeting at 6:30, like I, uh, open meeting.
No, 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 this is the tank. About that on the first, on the first, you see in the policy, it was originally, the policy was seven o'clock, but we start our meetings at 5:30. Yeah, so we're just cleaning up our policy. Yes. So yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. BQ A local, the enclosed revisions are recommended to reflect the current practices of the district level committee because so many provisions have been revised throughout for greater consistency with policy style and have been rearranged into a more logical order that text has not been annotated. It is a long annotation for BQ A and we are asking for the annotations to be revised. Once all of this, I failed to say, once all of this is done, then we send this back to task duty and they create a book and forty, forty-five days, we will bring it back for promoting. Okay, is that a yes or no? BQB local, the enclosed revisions are recommended to reflect the current practices of the various campus level committees because so many provisions have been revised throughout for greater consistency with policy style and have been rearranged into a more logical order that text has not been annotated. Yes or no?
Yes.
CCG local, the enclosed revisions are recommended to reflect the district's prevailing practices under the Texas Economic Development Act. Because the policy is almost entirely rewritten, it has not been annotated. Yes or no?
Yes.
CDA local, the local requirement for a comprehensive annual report of your investment portfolio, which goes beyond the quarterly reported requirements in state law, has been deleted. In addition, no loan, money, market, mutual funds provisions have been further defined to reflect district practice. Yes or no?
Yes.
CQ local, the enclosed revisions are recommended to clarify that employees are responsible for missing equipment. In addition, the district does not make technology resources available to the public. Therefore, that section of the policy has been removed. Yes or no?
Yes.
CB local, the enclosed revisions are recommended to better reflect current district practice by further clarifying that the district will not make final payments for construction until the board or its designated E accepts the work. Yes or no?
Yes.
DC local, the administration recommended an amendment to the district's basic hiring practices. During the summer months, June, July, and August, the board delegates hiring authority to the contractual, of contractual personnel to the superintendent or designated E. Yes or no?
Yes.
DCB local, the enclosed revisions are recommended in order to reflect that the district no longer issues an educator contract for any position for which neither the state nor the district requires SBC certification. Yes or no?
Yes.
DEA local, the enclosed revisions recommend, recommended to clearly affirm that the district will continue to pay employees during an emergency closing and that in the event of a federally declared disaster, the district would award premium pay to non-exempt employees who are required to report to work. Yes or no?
Yes.
BEC local, we have made revisions at for hourly increments of employees that take intermittent, intermittent FMLA leave and at, and at the order of use, sick leave pool days will be permitted after all available state and local leave has been exhausted. We have also added sick leave pool provisions. Yes or no?
Yes.
DED local, the district go over counts all of an employee's years of experience regardless of whether the service has been continuous. Therefore, this provision has been deleted. Yes or no?
Yes.
DEE local, the district go over reimburses employee meal expenses through a pre-dia basis. Therefore, this provision has been deleted. Yes or no?
Yes.
DFE local, the enclosed revision is recommended to reflect that the superintendent or designated E will be authorized to accept not approved and at-will employees for resignation. Yes or no?
Yes.
DGVA local, the enclosed revisions are recommended to reflect that employee complaints made at level two and level three will be heard by the level two administrator and level three administrator respectively. Yes or no?
Yes.
DP, because state law allows a classroom teacher with two years' experience to become a principal, the statement formally has at list, item six is unnecessary. Text reflecting such provision is contained in DP legal. Yes or no?
Yes.
EHBB local, to address the policy requirements detailed in TEA's current state plan for gifted and talented education and reflect the district's current practices in light of those requirements, this policy has been rewritten and is recommended to replace the policy currently found in our manual. Due to the number of provisions, the policy has not been annotated. Yes or no?
Yes.
EHI, EHPI local, the administration believed a board policy statement about an adult education program was unnecessary. Therefore, this policy is recommended for deletion. Yes or no? Yes.
In the event that we come back to the place where we want to reinstitute adult education in our district, we just have to make a motion.
Correct. The question is, in the event an adult education program comes back to the district, if we have that opportunity, what do we do with our policy? We update the policy? Correct. If we could, under DOI, that's one of our four business approses that went out. Yes or no?
Yes.
EIC local, this policy has been revised to reflect that official class rank will be calculated using the grades earned through the fifth, six weeks of the senior year. Yes or no?
Yes.
Question?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. FEC local, the revised enclosed revision is recommended because the district requires a doctor's note after a student is absent three consecutive days. Yes or no?
Yes.
FFAC local, the enclosed revisions are recommended to reflect that the district does not buy medications of any kind to provide to students except that certain over-the-counter medications will be administered by a licensed athletic trainer under conditions in compliance with the trainer's licensing rules. In addition, the district is adding a statement concerning EPPAP, EPPAP, to reflect district practice. Yes or no?
Yes.
FL local, the enclosed revision is recommended to identify the location of the list of people with access to special education records. Yes or no?
Yes.
FMF local, because the district does not offer swimming or wrestling as competitive athletic programs, this policy has been revised to remove those two programs. Yes or no?
Yes.
FMG local, in terms of student travel, the superintendent and board both approve in-state overnight trips and out-of-state trips. This policy has been revised to reflect that practice. Yes or no?
Yes.
FNAA local, this policy has been revised to reflect that the assistant superintendent or designated E will approve time, place, and matter restrictions on non-school literature by students in facilities other than school campuses. Yes or no?
Yes.
GKD local, reflecting the district's rules for non-school use of its facilities, the language more appropriate for the current legal climate, the enclosed policy is recommended to completely replace the obsolete policy currently found in your manual. This policy addresses First Amendment issues, so it is very important that the wording reflect language based on the most recent court decisions. Yes or no?
Yes.
GNE local, deletion of the enclosed policy is recommended because it is obsolete. Yes or no?
Yes.
GRA local, this policy has been revised to reflect that the principal's designated E may intervene when law enforcement officers wish to question a student. Yes or no?
Yes.
This concludes our policy review and recommendations.
I have a motion to accept item number seventeen. We have a motion by trustee Brown, rather, second. Second by trustee Ambrose, all those in favor say aye. Thank you very much. Personnel, consider if appropriate, approve employment of teachers. Motion. Have a motion by trustee Ambrose, second by trustee Brown, all those in favor say aye. Consider if appropriate, approve termination of contracted professional employees. Have a motion by trustee Brown. I have a motion by trustee Brown. Second by trustee Barti. All those in favor. Information, continuing education credits report for board members. All right. Annual announcement of board training. It is a basic obligation expectation of a city board member to complete the required board training each year. This information will be reflected in the board minutes as tier one, tier two, and tier three training, and will be made available to the public. In accordance with State Board of Education rules, each new board member will receive tier one training, which includes a local district orientation and a basic orientation regarding the Texas Education Code and relevant legal obligations. All city board members will receive updates regarding the Texas Education Code after each session of the Texas legislature, legislature, including each regular session and call session related to education. Tier one orientations. Texas Education Code requires update training. Following board members have completed the required update to the basic orientation to the Texas Education Code. Trustee Deborah Ambrose, trustee Diane Brown, trustee Donna Frank, trustee Kenneth Lawton, and trustee Robert Reed. Tier two teamwork. Following board members have completed the required annual team building training. Trustee Deborah Ambrose, trustee Diane Brown, trustee Donna Frank, trustee Kenneth Lawton, and trustee Robert Reed. The three discretionary continuing, tier three discretionary continuing education. Following board members who exceeded the required number of tier three continuing education hours for the year. Trustee Deborah Ambrose, trustee Brandon Barti, trustee Diane Brown, trustee Joseph Hillary, and trustee Robert Reed. Average daily enrollment, average daily attendance.
Average daily enrollment is 8,277. Average daily attendance is 94.9%.
Eight, thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven for the average daily enrollment. Average, average daily attendance, 94. Chair will accept the motion for adjournment on tonight. Wait one moment.
On behalf of the Corr always independent school district, we want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday season. Our school will dismiss on December 20th, which is playdate, so we're excited about that. And we will return on January the 3rd. So, on behalf of the Corr always independent school district, and I'm sure our president will wish Merry Christmas to my board.
One more thing, we want to thank again our mighty, mighty Titans, and congratulate them on a wonderful season. The players, the staff, and all that they did to bring us to third level playoff game. We look forward to great things. Then we're looking forward to great things for our basketball team as well. And then from trustees of Corr always independent school district, that quarter read staff. It's been a wonderful, wonderful year. Had a lot of challenges, and we're still facing those challenges, but grace to God, we'll be all right. We'll keep moving higher, 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 higher always. Motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion, trustee Reed, second trustee Brown. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. From Tim Tason.